You'd probably help if we're all on the same financial system because we could see it directly, right?
One of the, one of the.
They wouldn't, but yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they, I mean, one of the issues was, Wade brought up, and I, I don't know anything about finances, is that they are very, and I think even the county, some of the county staff agree with this, is some of the finance stuff that's good for us isn't necessarily good for schools and vice versa. So that was, and I think both county staff, some of the county staff had disagreed with that too. So I would agree with you that the, in that case, but one of the things that we got out of that meeting, which I thought was, I thought was very good, was, there's gonna, there needs to be better communication between the three entities. And we, we did, we did sit down and say, they, they will be meeting on a regular basis, especially the treasurer's office and our finance. So that did come out of that as far as kind of reconciling some of the, some of the issues going forward. So we're hoping that we'll, we'll see an improvement there.
Mr. Cully. Our YouTube has crashed.
Yeah, YouTube, on the YouTube, YouTube side crashed. We're still recording. And so we will replace the video that's live streamed with the recorded video later tonight.
Mr. Forehand.
Mr. Cully. Um, help me out for a second. You, you said something that piqued my interest. Regarding the accounting abilities of the treasurer's staff. No one has an accounting background?
I wouldn't say that. Um, Beth came with the, out of, out of the auditing world. Now, the current treasurer came out of the banking world. I'm not saying they can't do, it's not that they can't do math.
Alright, that makes it feel a little better.
Yeah, no, it, it, and, and I'm, there's nothing here disparaging about the office. We've been behind for a number of years, so it's not related to Brittany as much as, I believe workload, um, the amount of money that's moving through, the budget's increased a bunch over the 12 years. So I've been here, amount of accounts, I mean, we were count, you know, we have a detention fund, we have all these extra funds. Um, and so they deal with cash. But getting it in the right line item, GL code type thing, is the last, sort of becomes the last priority. We've collected this money today, this money came in by wire transfer, this money came in through the internet. What's in the bank? Cash, but that's all piled up in a bank account. We look at everything, what funds it in, what the part, you see, what, where it's supposed to be. That's what I'm talking about on the GL side. And so that's the part we've struggled getting. The money is accounted for. They balance the statements, but then it's what, what it is and where, where it's supposed to be.
Okay, so we know we've received, and this is just a number, we've received forty million dollars in tax revenue. But we have no idea because it's not divided out into the different general ledger accounts where those revenues came from.
Not quickly.
Not quickly. Six months later, we know. But we're trying to do a budget now before we actually know.
Correct.
What happened.
And or the auditors, kind of, the auditors want to know, and there's, there's multiple,
Okay.
multiple reasons why it needs to be done faster, it needs to be done faster so we can give you more timely quarterly reports of where we are. It's nice to know what we spent, but if you don't know how much you've actually made.
It's the, it's on both ends. As, as far as, we, we know we've spent thirty-five million dollars. But we don't know what accounts are trending over and which ones are way under.
On the revenue.
On the revenue and expense?
No, expense we know.
So the expenses are getting.
We write the checks. So the software knows right away, I can run a report and tell you what Chief Lopdis has spent, what Mr. Shee, what their account, what those things look like.
Right.
What I can't tell you is what any of their revenues look like.
Yeah, he, he got forty million dollars in revenue in. But we don't know whether it's real estate tax, personal property tax, or some other thing.
School money, I mean, there's just various places.
Or, or funds for school.
Right, we get so much money.
So we can't go back in budget based on.
It's wired in, it's all these things, and I think that's part of what the schools are looking for. What do we get in? Um, they get grant funds, we get grant funds, we get compensation board funds for the comp board positions and offices. There's just a lot of things, those are all GL related.
And we, we add the position, if I remember correctly, six, seven months ago.
Mm-hmm.
To this office, we add the position.
We did, and they're doing, they're doing the cash side of things. Um, the daily closing of the cash register, you know, over top of the people that are actually collecting the money. And Tamika might be able to remember other things that, uh, that employee was doing, I can't right off the top of my head, but they're full. And, but it's not necessarily a skill set that they came with, with GL, understanding the GL. Because I would have taken, that's what I was kind of negotiating, trying to get that employee, but I don't think that would, wouldn't.
So we would.
We wouldn't be ahead.
Theoretically, we hire someone today, we would effectively have two additional people to do the same amount of work that was being done seven months ago with two less.
No, sort of. The work wasn't being done. Yes, we have two more employees, but we were behind last year, the year before, the year before, it's just getting worse.
It's perpetually, we're perpetually late.
Getting worse, yes. If you go back, Fran retired in eighteen. If you go back to a quarterly report in sixteen, maybe, you'll see that the first quarter report was February, March. It was still somewhat late then. It's just gotten critically late when we, the auditors are looking at us going, and Tamika can't give them anything.
And that we've purchased all this software to make us more efficient.
And, and, yeah, but, and, and that's true, but that's not fully installed.
This is a consistent theory, you know, technology, we're, we're spending all this money on the school side, on the government side, on, on every side. And we need more people to run the technology that's supposed to make us more efficient.
Now, this, this is not necessarily a technology thing.
It only works if you use it. That's the thing.
This is not a technology side either. This, this wasn't, currently, we have an issue that we're on two systems. The Keystone system is our system of record, and that's what's being used in finance. That's what we write the checks with, payroll, HR, all that stuff. The treasurer and the commissioner of revenue are on the tax side, tax program, even though uh, central collections in the treasurer's office was the cash registers. But you can't turn all that on until we're ready to go with the commissioner of revenue on the assessing side, the tax side, the personal property, uh, business license, all that's got to be turned on. We're hoping that's this summer. That'll solve some of it, because what's collected will at least be in Keystone, that'll help some. But the reconciliation of the cash, so the bank statement is done, the cash is right with the treasurer's office, it's got to be turned over to somebody to make sure then it's reconciled in the accounting system. And that we can then run reports and give to the auditors, give to y'all, that type of thing. That is what we're looking for. So yes, we're adding employees, but it's not because we have new software, we, it, we, the workload is more than it was. And we were behind years ago. It's just, this is an opportunity with the new treasurer to negotiate, hey, we, we would like to take this part away from your office and put it in finance.
To help both of us.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, I had a, Mr. Sealy was, I thought I was going to make a motion, or he did. It was.
Mr. Forehand had que, I didn't realize there were that many questions I would have left alone, but I'm, I'm, we've all heard this. We've been behind for a long time, and we, we talked about this last meeting or meeting before last. And I think it's time that we move forward because we're never going to be able to do a budget without knowing our revenue side. So I'll make a motion that we, um, I just lost.
Page I was. Approve the general ledger.
General ledger reconciliation.
Transition to the finance department.
With supplemental appropriation.
Yep.
Okay.
So motion by Mr. Sealy and second by Mr. Thomas. Any discussion on the motion?
One question with Mr. McKenzie. This, this being a function currently being carried out with, uh, by a constitutional officer, is there any legal loophole or hula hoop we have to jump through or dance around with?
No, provided we just have documentation from her that she agrees to the arrangement. Um, since she's independent of the board.
Sure.
We don't set her job roles, responsibilities, so we just have a letter from her stating that she agrees to this arrangement as a party to it and that she understands.
So that's our only hurdle to loophole.
Yeah, just to document it, but she needs to consent to it, obviously, but it sounds like that's not going to be hard to get.
Did she have to do that, Chris, before you leave? Did she have to do that when the commissioner of revenue took over DMV?
Yes, they did. They, that was an agreement between the two offices that they brought, and then I have to sign it for DMV on behalf of the town.
It was a letter, okay.
Yeah, but they agreed. That's why that switched with.
That's fine. I, I can go with that. Okay, we can go with that.
Thank you.
Alright, I have a motion and a second.
Mr. Cully, you'll get a letter for us from her transferring that. That's, I'm just trying to keep everybody on level playing field.
Yeah, I, I'll probably have Mr. Parton draft up a little something, and we will get that in front of her to sign. But yeah, she was, she was almost in tears thanking us for trying to help her out.
Okay.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Discussion's done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six, nothing. We are to, I lost my, uh, yeah, information and calendar items.
As always, we've included, uh, status of capital projects. So you can see where we are, what's completed and the percent that are completed. We have, um, Monday is President's Day, and then here in this building, um, Black History Program at seven PM. Mrs. Long.
I got it.
Um, on the Wednesday, the twenty-first, um, Habitat wall raising, signing kickoff at the high school, and that's at twelve fifty. March, our, um, grand opening dedication of Station Ten in Carmel Church is at ten o'clock on the night, that's a Saturday. The board meeting will then be on the twelfth. Another board meeting on the twenty-sixth. And Easter's on the thirty-first.
Wow.
I'm running through the months.
Cold Easter.
Okay. I will take a, uh.
Did you mention?
Yeah, would, would, would you all agree with that twenty-sixth date? We talked about coming on the, uh, twelfth, I already closed my book, but, um, but I don't think that the General Assembly, we're going to know anything then. So we were, we were thinking about a joint meeting with the schools on the twenty-sixth, maybe four o'clock? Four, four thirty?
Four o'clock's going to be two, four thirty is on the edge.
Four thirty.
Four thirty is, yeah, four o'clock is, that's, yeah.
Got to speed, I understand. Alright, four thirty.
Did you mention the Habitat thing on the twenty-first?
I, I thought I did. Yeah, it's the wall raising, twelve fifty at the high school. Note the time, twelve fifty.
Yep.
Twenty, so, but we've got time, but I think if you tell the schools that you agree on the twenty-sixth, we'll recess out of the meeting on the twelfth to that.
We agree on the twenty-sixth, just let I tell you.
Just make sure you let Nancy know it's the twenty-sixth.
That's right. So I don't show up on the nineteenth.
Okay. Okay, so, um, we will, I will take a, uh, we'll do closing board comments. Mr. Forehand?
Uh, none at this time.
Mr. Thomas?
Note, the Matapanai Fire Station is going to be open on the March ninth. Make sure you're there at ten AM.
Did we build a second fire station?
No. We're just not going to pay attention to people who drew lines around our station.
Mrs. Long?
Mr. Forehand, I just want you to know I had the exact same conversation with Mr. Cully earlier today, so.
Which one, about the fire station?
No, no, about, about the new position.
Oh, okay, good.
So, uh.
Please work.
Judges.
All good questions.
Mr. Sealy?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Underwood. And I have none at this time either. Alright, uh, we, I need a motion to, uh, go into closed session.
Mr. Chair, I move that this board convenes in closed meeting pursuant to the Real Estate Exception Section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven eight point three of the Code of Virginia in, for discussion and county staff and rep, with county staff and representatives from the Caroline County School Board regarding the potential acquisition of real estate in the Carmel Church area for use by the Caroline County Public Schools.
Motion to go into closed session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are going into closed session.
Second.
All right, motion is second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Let's go.
I move that the Caroline County Board of Supervisors certifies that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully accepted from except from the open meeting requirements of Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting to which this certification applies and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed or considered by the board.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Forehand, do you so certify that only what was proposed in closed meeting was discussed in closed meeting?
I so certify.
Mr. Thomas?
I so certify.
Mrs. Long?
I so certify.
Mr. Sealer?
I so certify.
Mr. Underwood?
I so certify.
And I so certify as well. All right, I think-
Motion do adjourn.
So, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we adjourned.